Ten o'clock, we'll call this meeting in order. Item number three, be recognized guest. Once again, I like to thank everybody for being here. And I guess if you pass down that sheet, that sheet's been a bust, man. Item number four is new business.
I'm gonna pass out a paper that I typed up. If there's anything on here that you wanna add or take away on the transfer station, you can get it back to me. We need to have a meeting next Monday at one, Karen, over the transfer station.
What about the lawyer that we're drafting that up for us?
Well, I got with him and he said, present it to everybody and then we would go from there to make sure everybody, if we need to work something different on this, we need to get it done first before we go forward. Like I say, if you just get it back to me, email it to me or whatever, drop it off, I'll come get it, just whatever. We just need to look at it. But we need to get on board and get this done.
Whatever meeting on the next Monday.
Yes, but we need to cover this so we kinda know what we're gonna talk about when we get there.
Any else?
Yes.
Yeah, any new business?
I do. Fifty-three inmates today.
Go ahead.
We have fifty-three inmates today. Our inmate count is, in the last two weeks, is averaging the fifties. We, and I guess, just need to discuss it real quick, how we're gonna purchase the hot water tank. I know we're gonna use DOC funds that's came into our operations that we've got. The question I have is the company that we can order it from does not accept purchase orders, okay? What is the, what is our procedure on purchasing without a purchase order? They have to be paid upfront before we get the product.
I would, I would tell you this, first of all, I'd call an auditor, but second of all, I would have them fax you as an invoice.
Already got.
You've already got the invoice, we'll get the P O number, put it on there, let it check out and then take it with you. We can pick it up.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna ship it from Pennsylvania. So I'm asking. I'll call the, I'll call the auditor's office.
You can call an auditor, but I think he would tell you, get an invoice, get the P O, mail the check, let them send, and then they'll send it to you. But I would double check that with an auditor. But I believe that's how it works.
But I did check on it because you might double check yourself.
Since you did call the auditor's office already.
I believe, I don't think you had a bit of trouble doing that to him.
Another notice, man, we've been extremely busy. Thieves, small thefts are going up. I mean, we're getting a lot of property back. We're recovering another, we recovered another truck yesterday down south. Had a pursuit the other night that was a stolen vehicle from another county. We're not seeing a lot of stuff stolen from our county right now, but we're seeing a lot of stuff from other counties stolen that's coming back. I consider that a plus that folks are knowing that we're, you know, we're out there, so they're not stealing from us, they're stealing from other folks around. So have that issue that we're working with daily. The jail is, is going pretty smoothly. I like to knock on wood when we say that, but everything is running, running pretty efficient right now. Other than that, everything is, everything's fine. I don't know of anything else that we can, as of right now. I would tell you that I did talk to Mr. Orbison, reference the jail issues, and I say the jail issue, the jail trust issue, the Haskell County Trust Authority issue. The trust board is not an operating trust pursuant to Mr. Orbison. He said that when he had spoke at the end of last year with the commissioners, there was a, a way that that was, that was written that they didn't want it as an operating trust, just wanted a trust in place for the financing side of it. So there is no operating trust. He did say that he would be willing to look at all the documents that we have regarding the financial side of the jail to see if there's anything that he can do to help. I explained to him I'd bring that to the Board of Commissioners to often make the decision if we wanted to go with hiring Mr. Orbison to look at all of our stuff, talking about the half cent and the quarter cent, but he is, he is on board to look at everything that we have.
He's already answered that question when I went to his office.
He's willing to come and sit down and put it in writing, but I'm just saying that's, that's something that's up to the commissioners. I was asked, asking about the operating trust. I did that and have got to the bottom with that. If the commissioners want to proceed with an operating trust under a Title sixty trust, he's willing to prepare that in a proper way and get it ready. But that's something that we need to either put on the, put for another meeting on an agenda and y'all discuss if we wanna, if we wanna go that way or not.
The only reason I wanted to, when we had, was just, you know, just like the thirty thousand dollars that came in.
Well, here's what he said. That doesn't matter. If we don't have a Title sixty trust, the sheriff can spend that any way he wants.
I, that's my point. And Tim, I trust you a hundred percent.
I understand.
Got no question, but I just thought that four or five people were looking at it.
Then what we need to do is set up a Title sixty trust, and to set up the Title sixty trust, it'll be one commissioner, the sheriff, and three. Each commissioner gets to elect a delegate. Other than that, I mean, that's, if, if that's what, if that's what the board wants, I'm okay with it.
We didn't think about it.
Oh yeah, I mean, however y'all wanna do it. I'm just saying.
I didn't think about it all last week.
That'll be something that has to be put as an agenda for y'all to, y'all to decide how y'all want, how y'all wants to do that. If y'all wanna continue to do it like we're doing it, I can do a monthly report of finances to the Board of Commissioners once a month like I do in that board meeting, but theoretically, here's the, here's the big issue is, say in three or four years I'm not here, if there's not an operating trust set in, then they can do whatever they wanna do with the money and it's set there. If there is an operating trust under Title sixty, the board governs how the money's spent. So I'm good with whatever. Y'all just let me know if we need to move forward with Mr. Orbison or not. That's, y'all, y'all let me know.
Do you think it would, it would be a good thing to do that?
Six, either way, Sandra, the operating trust, when I was, when I've talked to several other facilities, it's a good idea. If you wind up getting, if there winds up being a conflict between the sheriff who actually operates it and the operating board, then it becomes a bad deal. So I mean, it really becomes down to what the commissioners want and how they wanna do it. I'm open to do whatever, but the, you know, the operating trust relieves some civil liability from the commissioners because there's a board that votes on everything that goes forward. That's the way I've understood it. I would really want one or two or all of y'all to call Orbison and discuss with him because I can't tell you everything that, I mean, I can't remember everything that he told me. But it, but it was, when I, when I mentioned the Title sixty trust, he said that's not the way y'all's facility is set up. He said, he said, it was discussed in the, in earlier meetings, but that was not what was done at that point. But he said, I'm willing to fix it and get it to that way if the, if the Board of County Commissioners wants to go that way. So I'm open to whichever way y'all wanna go. Y'all just tell me what we need to do and.
I think we're, I mean, I, I think we oughta give an answer right now, but just, we can, I think for the long term, it'd be better to do that.
Well, I think we need Mr. Orbison to come anyway and talk to everyone and to get us on the right track for what he is saying because let everybody hear it.
He will come at the request of the commissioners.
Correct.
So y'all, if you want to, I've, I've made contact with him. He just needs to be following up with the commissioners if they want, if we wanna continue.
I think we need to engage you on this and get some advice.
I do too. Tim, does that one go out for the broader people?
No, that's a Title nineteen trust. The Title sixty trust is, is just an operating trust that is set up under Title sixty, which it's under the Haskell County Public Trust Authority and it's their actual trust board. That's all that is. So.
Yeah, they had two options when he was here before.
That was, that was what he had said and we went with the second option and not the sixty. So, but he's willing to come and fix it. Y'all just need, this needs to be from a phone call from the Board of Commissioners.
We've had to clarify.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
The work detail, we worked in the courthouse all last week. We got that, we got all the paint in the jury room and that bathroom in there. They've got it painted, it looks real good. They scrubbed and, and cleaned and it looks real nice. They brought the, the new tables, the new desk up there in those two rooms. Got that set and ready. Now, we're just kinda waiting on the next steps as far as courthouse carpeting and things of that nature goes and some of the shelves in the, in the, in the room that are up there in the law office. Still continued going on meetings with FEMA, signing off on, on stuff, getting, you know, final approval on getting the county reimbursed for back in April whenever those storms where I had no clue it was gonna take as long as what it, it has, but it's, it's still going forward. They're still meeting with Kena and, and trying to get them reimbursed, so there's still quite a bit of that happening and going on. December twenty-eighth, I received an email, December twenty-eighth is the final date to have all the changes and improvements made whenever they came and made the Department of Labor safety inspection checks. December twenty-eighth is our cutoff date. They sent me an email at the end of last week. I have a list of things that he annotated. One of those is the safety protocol, which we'll talk about here in the next few steps. I do have that list of things that are gonna go besides that that need to be addressed and I will show that to you guys, talk to you guys about that later. Doesn't need to be addressed in a meeting. Another thing is we've hit that time of year that I mentioned two or three months ago about what the fire departments were so concerned about and the, all the firefighters, even on the state level, where fires can get out of hand real quick right now. And I'd asked you guys about two or three months ago about what's, what's try and, we've got those natural fire breaks with the roads, with the county roads. Let's try and really hit those right now. The grass isn't gonna grow anymore. What's, I'm asking you again on behalf of them and myself as far as managing the fires, if you guys will go back in, brush all county roads, even if they've already gone, been gone over, let's hit the ones that don't normally get hit. Let's expand those fire breaks. Let's really reach out there and do those just because that's a preventative measure that we can do to keep these fires from spreading. We've got those natural fire breaks in there. So I'm asking, it's just a step that you guys can take that can mitigate any kind of damage, any kind of property damage. That's what I've got until I come on to the next part of the agenda.
Well, Sandra, you wanna talk about this, Haskett County Transfer Station?
No, it was the Health Department. I did give, the Health Department had a meeting with Sue and a couple of other ladies last week. I believe they're gonna be on the agenda next week. I did give them the, the findings of the building. They had a couple of people they wanted to go talk to. Basically, if they don't stay there, we're gonna have to find them another building and we did discuss that. But I think they'll probably bring more to the board next week in their findings and on their finances. I spoke to her, I guess it was last Friday, I was up here at the courthouse, and they should know more by next, by this week. So anybody that's gonna let you know, I did give that, the findings on that.
Do they know now if the state will continue to reimburse them next year?
That's what, this is what the, as soon as they finish up, they should know more when she comes. It looked a little better than it did when I talked to them on that stuff, so.
Now, do we have any more new business? We'll move on to item number five, and that's approved commission proceedings from previous meeting. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
All stories.
Yes.
Yes, part three.
Yes. Item number six will be approved blanket P O's into this week. Southside Fire Department's getting one for five hundred dollars total. Southside's getting one for three hundred dollars to O'Reilly's. S S F two, thousand dollars to Fleet Corps. Sixteen hundred dollars to, is that performance, gonna be performance food? We kinda got cut off. Performance food. And then we have one for the jail for three hundred dollars to Fleet Corps. Those are the blanket P O's for this week.
Commissioner, if you've noticed, the, the performance food bill, it's been eighteen hundred. We've, we've brought it down to sixteen hundred. Our food bills, we've been able to get it down between thirteen, fourteen hundred a month where we were spending about eighteen hundred a, or a week, where we were spending eighteen hundred to two thousand a week. This new food company has been very good. We're buying everything from them, so that's why there's a reduction as of right now for our food bill. We're still, still working to get it, get it lower.
Part three.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, part three. Same as after.
Yes.
All stories.
Yes. Anyway, Tim, we thank, thanks for having there on, having been saved. Gonna present that. Item number seven, signed October month of court, court clerk. I'm gonna make a motion on item number eight.
I make a motion.
I mean, I'm sorry, item number seven.
I'll second it.
Yes, part three.
Yes.
All stories.
Yes. Item number eight will be discussed, consider approving safety program.
Aaron, I guess you're up?
Yeah, those safety programs are the safety programs that were recommended and sent to me by our advisor from the Department of Labor. Each of you have a copy of the written safety programs that have been, that he suggested. I have gone through and filled in everything that needs to be filled in. You have one per district. I also put in there that you guys are the responsible parties at your individual districts as far as the safety coordinator for your specific district. Obviously, it still goes up the chain as myself being the safety coordinator for the county, but we have to have one per district. You guys are listed as that. This is everything that he had recommended as far as the written safety protocols go. The only thing that you guys have to actually agree on and decide upon that is in those is there are medical exams in there and you have to choose what medical facility you guys want to use for the, your county employees. And that's just, and I left those blank in there. I can't, I couldn't even tell you what page it's on right now, but that part is left blank. That is left for you guys to decide and you can fill those in as you go along. Obviously, that's gonna change at some point, you know, insurance dependent, things of that nature, but you have to have one set aside for the county to happen, or for the county to have, for the employees to go to get these medical exams done and evaluation somewhere, the time comes. And that, those are, that's everything. I couldn't, I couldn't give you a list of, of all the actual programs. You guys have got them right in front of you, so. It's up to you guys to decide that. We have to know, we have to have them in place by December twenty-eighth. But those are knocked out, ready to go, except for the medical facility of your choosing.
I would like to, and as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm happy with Aaron doing this, but if y'all, y'all wanna vote on it today or you wanna table it and vote on it next week?
Well, I took mine home this weekend and read it.
I just now got mine.
So we could table it and discuss it and then decide.
Bart, what do you think? I mean, I, I have no problem with Aaron.
Sure, throw it out, but I hadn't had a chance to look at it.
So if y'all wanna, talk about make a motion or?
I make a motion that we table till next week.
Bart's second.
One thing I forgot on the new business, we've got our month, our quarterly safety meeting of our presentation next Tuesday. Seven thirty will be the road cruise at the Votek, and then we'll do ten and two for the courthouse.
Next when?
Next Tuesday morning.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, item number nine will be discussed and possibly be sent a previous vote on transfer appropriations. Make a motion on that.
Well, I have a question. Why? When y'all signed it and then you marked it out last week, why we have to vote on it?
Why we have to vote on this?
Yes.
We have the auditor, did we call the auditors?
I did too, and she didn't say we had to vote. That's where I'm confused.
Do you, do you want paperwork from the auditors?
I don't know what question it was asked, what I asked. I did.
It's on there. There's a call back.
The things that we need to know and break the ever three up on till we know what we're asked. I mean, once you sign it and, and mark it out.
You know, since, since we have a minute here, I read the proposal, proposition on what the Haskell County voted on for the jail on the half a cent, before the jail was ever built. The way I read it, and I would like for everybody to read this, the way it reads to me and after talking to different bond attorneys and different people that's in law, you know, everything you vote on, it will always go back to the ballot of what the people voted on. And when you read this here, it says that in twenty-five years from the effective date of the tax or the date of the retirement of any debt incurred related thereto, which for occurs earlier such tax be used for remodel, construction, financing, financing. That means if the, if it's paid off before you can take, within that twenty-five years, you can use it to refurbish the jail. Then it goes on to say, when the twenty-five years is up, the tax is over. It doesn't say anything about, I mean, and anybody can come up there and get one and read it. Have you read it, Tim?
Yeah.
Is that the way you understood it? Cause I mean, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer in a term.
All right. Well, I, I've lost a lot of sleep over the last seven days over this, this right here. Tons of sleep. All right, let me get mine. Okay, we voted on a sales tax and, which went into effect, which is that ballot right there.
Just right here.
Which says a half a cent. Actually, me and Rhonda went over it the other day, cause my thought process was it was a half a cent until it was paid for, but then it says or earliest. So at twenty-five years, the sales tax is done.
That's what it says on this ballot. In twenty-five years, the sales tax is done.
Okay, but, and then, let me, so I talked to Orbison the other day and Orbison said the reason there's an amort, a payment amortization scale is because it has to be paid for within the twenty-five years of that. I said, but we're only supposed to pledge a half a cent. I said, that's all the county has, has agreed to pledge. And then, he said, well, when I started looking at that before, he said during a refinance, a quarter cent was pledged, and I said, well, I, we, I said, we still haven't determined if that was a lawful to pledge a quarter cent or not. So that's when Orbison said that he would like to come down and look at everything that we had.
I know.
No, that's what he said.
I understand that.
I didn't finish.
That's just what he said. He said he'd like to come down, but no, our, our ballot says a half a cent.
Teresa was with me. We sat right there in Mr. Orbison's office and Teresa, and I know she remembers this, he said, always go back to the ballot.
I agree. I'm not disagreeing with that.
That ballot has, that quarter cent sales tax has absolutely no ties to that jail.
No, I, I don't.
So that.
No, I agree. I mean, I'm not, that quarter cent was not going on.
It's determined by the county commissioners.
Determined on, yes, I agree with that.
Okay, that's what he told us.
So, and me and, I mean, me and Rhonda had a long talk over this the other day. We could, I mean, in all honesty, we could all find, we could all find an attorney to tell us what we want him to, what, what we wanted, what we wanted to tell us. Period. We could all find one to tell us. Well, but we could all find one to say, this is what we think, another attorney says this is what this think. I'll be honest, I, I don't think, I mean, and I mean, Rick and I have had lots of discussions over the last week. He knows how, how, how I've been over this thing, but I, honestly, I, I don't know if we'll ever get a, an attorney, one or two attorneys tells the same thing.
Wouldn't you have to agree on this, Tim? The county cannot, cannot go into any financial obligation for more than a year.
I'll agree with that.
I mean, that, that's, that's not up for discussion, is it?
No, the only thing, Paul's.
Okay, so if the quarter percent.
The only thing is we have a, the only thing that I, I mean, we've talked about this half cent. I think that's all that we, we should have to pledge.
That's all we're pledging.
But we, we have a document that was signed during the refinance that is the quarter cent that renews every year. It's an automatic renewal every year. And we've gotta find out if that's, if that's binding or not.
According to Mr. Orbison, like I said a while ago, if you read the, if you read the ballot how it was voted on.
On the quarter cent ballot, yeah.
Quarter percent.
On the quarter percent ballot.
It says general, this is Haskell County General Operations.
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 And it's determined by the county commissioners. No, I agree. I agree. It should have never been at quarter cent.
It wasn't legally done.
It what?
I agree. So you said the commissioners broke the law.
I said, if everybody won't, thinks I put my foot in my mouth, I'm gonna tell you, Teresa, and Sandra.
Teresa's.
In my opinion, in my opinion, I'm just giving you my opinion. Y'all call me on it. In my opinion, it was not handled properly. I'm not perfect. I'm not a bond attorney and we did it. No, I do not think it was handled properly.
I'm just going by what Mr. Orbison told us. He said that.
I just think this, I think we're all very clear.
The vote, the vote of the people had put that money one place, but then it was pledged to go toward the bond, and his exact words were, the commissioners do not have the authority to overrule a vote of the people, but it's done.
Exactly. Exactly. That's what I'm saying right there.
The auditors backed that up.
Right.
Back it up with the report.
And that's what I just said. We didn't handle it right.
Here, here's the big.
As the three commissioners and, and it was myself, Kenny, and I believe Marvin. We did not handle that right. And I may end up sitting here and telling you, we didn't do it right.
I don't think that the, the money on the ballot has been changed. There, there's nothing, no argument about that part right there about ever being changed or anything.
No, which one are you talking about?
The half a cent.
Yeah, we're not arguing the half a cent.
Yeah, but you keep saying it refers back to it.
I'm talking about the quarter.
Well, you was talking about the half a while ago.
Yeah, but now we're on the quarter. So go ahead.
The quarter was pledged during the refinance, so that's another transaction took place that come after that. So that part hasn't changed. It's the quarter and the refinance and, and the junior lien that changed where the quarter was added, and that's where all the legal documents are that, where the commissioners signed off pledging it. I've done a lot of research on it, talked to several people about it. I don't think you can go back and change it after the fact. It's been three and a half years ago. It's been acknowledged and paid and accepted for three and a half years, and now, it's my understanding, you can't stand up and say, well, we ain't gonna do it no more, but of course, we just now decided we're not gonna do it after you've been doing it for three and a half years. Somebody might have a different opinion, but it was pledged and honored and acknowledged and has been that way for three and a half years.
But my, I agree with you, Rick. No argument there. But what I'm telling you, when something's done wrong, it doesn't make it right.
Well, how was it done wrong?
It was done wrong because, now you asked me a question. It was done wrong because the commissioners and nobody else has the right. It was done wrong because, now you asked me a question, it was done wrong because the commissioners and nobody else has the right to go against the vote of the people.
You, there, that, I'm saying.
I'm not, I'm just hovering this up, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the quarter percent, this is just a proposition.
You didn't go against the vote of the people on the quarter cent.
Yes, we did, it was for general, well, I don't have that one to read to you.
We've got two letters from our district attorneys that says, it's no problem paying it out the quarter cent, it is still general. I mean, we've got the, we've already had district attorneys review that.
Well, this is my opinion, I'm glad this is brought up, if people love me or hate me, whatever they wanna do, but I'm gonna be open. There's no way we can keep paying for this jail out of the general fund, we're gonna break the courthouse.
I agree.
I understand it, we all agree to that.
We all agree on that.
Then why would we?
What, what I don't understand is why, all of a sudden, and y'all don't do it, and then, you know, you leave me in the dark to a point, but y'all did talk, talk to Clark last Monday. You know, and I said, I'd like to finish it up until December to see where we can be. I'm sorry, we have got, you've got to make a plan before you take it away.
Well, we do have, we have.
And that's my, that's my, what I'm at, is I'm, uh, kinda aggravated, is that if you don't have a plan, where are we going then? And that's why we need to have a meeting, and Clark said, well, we, we, the commissioners do need to sit down and need to decide what we need to do, and I agree with him.
I think, for me personally, I mean, I didn't, I don't want the, I want the jail to be paid for, I want, we need the jail, I mean, I, but at the end of the day.
Thing about this, you can fast forward to probably late next summer, I'm just guessing, because who knows what's gonna happen at the jail? With maintenance issues and things like that, but we're gonna be broke. We're not only got, not gonna have the money to transfer to the jail payment, we're not gonna have the money to run the courthouse or the jail. So, it makes more sense to me to stop while you've still got some reserves there to operate the jail and the courthouse. Than to continue on this path until you're bankrupt. That's just my thinking on it.
And I just feel like we all need to be on the same track, we all need to discuss it, just, you know, that's just my opinion.
And my, I'll say one more, my opinion is.
Well, I.
Go ahead, Clark, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think we do need to talk to Mr. Orbison, because we need some sound legal advice from a bond attorney about this stuff, and, you know, my opinion is not worth anything or anybody else's, and we gotta have a.
And that's what I'm saying, Clark, I have talked to Mr. Orbison.
Yes, but we all, we all need to hear it as one group.
I agree.
As a meeting, to pull it through and discuss to see what kinda advice he can give us.
I would, I, I.
And going back to where we're at, we're here now, we don't, we can't move backwards anymore, we've gotta move forward.
I have no problem having Mr. Orbison.
So I will call him today to see when, if he can come in, and I will let everyone, you know.
That sounds good.
Unless Tim, unless you, you've already talked to him.
I've talked to him, but y'all need.
I do have, one of the commissioners will have to call.
Y'all need to call and request him, I will tell you that I, I agree with, but I think we all agree. If we continue down the same path, we're gonna be broke and there's not gonna be a, there's not gonna be a, a county, I mean, we're gonna be, we're gonna be extremely broke. Um, we're spending, I mean, we, we can't continue to spend what we're spending, especially for that facility. Um, you know, we've done everything we can do to save money out there, and it's still, I mean, you're talking fifty-eight hundred dollars for a hot water tank, you're talking, it's something, you know, if the other one goes out, it's ten grand. If, you know, we've got two pieces of equipment down in the, in the, down right now in the kitchen, we're gonna have to get those fixed, we do have a, we have a reserve that can fix them, we're gonna buy the parts. I mean, we're, we're talking about a lot of money for a facility that if we could, we, I mean, we have the money to either operate it or, or to pay, but it's hard to do, it's hard to do both right now, I mean, we're, we're struggling. You know, you figure up toward the end of the year, um, you fi, you start figuring up toward the end of the year for maintenance and operation and different things. But you're looking at another thirty or forty thousand dollars just for maintenance and operation on that facility to get to the end of the year, besides the budget that's already there. And that's, you know, that's saying, hey, we're doing everything we can, you know, we're, we've, we've created, and we've created different things, we're fixing to start doing pizzas on Fridays to generate probably fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month, just to put back into the jail. I mean, we're doing, we're doing everything we can, and we can't, I mean, I, I see, I see where it's at.
And we appreciate.
And I know, but I, I just want y'all to know, I see where it's at, you know, I look right here, when you're signing payroll, and I see the payroll, that, the jail's payroll is equal to the whole county's payroll, I, I see that, but I mean, I know that, or let me rephrase that, the courthouse payroll.
But you're open twenty-four seven.
I agree, no, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, just so everybody else understands, I mean, I'm, I'm on the same page to do what we gotta do to help, I mean, you can, you can ask Rick, Gary and Clark, I've, I've talked to them multiple times this week, all three of them, trying to figure out a way to.
With him, I'm with you, and I appreciate every dime you've saved us, and, and I, I commend you for it, thank you, done a super job. And I appreciate the pizza idea, cause hey, a hundred bucks saves a hundred bucks made, but you know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands.
No, I agree.
And that's good, but I think it all boils down to when, when it all started out there at the VOTAC, the three commissioners did not make, the, the three commissioners at that time did not vote for this jail, did not do that, cause I know we're getting a blunt of it, and that's fine. But none of us went up, went out there and built seven and a half million dollar jail on three million dollar budget, that's what was handed to us. And we were gonna go back to the people for a half a cent sales tax, but you had an economic professor in Nolte Langford at OSU, that's a county guru on county government, he is the guru. Told you the only way to pay for the jail was a half a cent sales tax or property tax, it's the only way. And if you think you're gonna put it on property tax without, it can't go on property tax unless it's voted on, or goes in the fall, or voted on by the people. It would take twelve meals to collect enough money to keep paying for the jail, you can only go up four meals a year. And you had to have sixty percent of the vote of the people, you would have to pass that three years in a row to come up to enough money to pay for the jail for property tax, we don't have three years. And I'll tell you what, when that committee was go, whenever they were out there, I feel like some people thought they was gonna come up there and show three dumb county commissioners where all the money was at. And now it's been two, three years, I haven't seen yet had anybody tell me how it was gonna pay for the jail. And if, if anybody has an idea on how to pay for the jail, I'd appreciate if they'd put it in writing, sign it and bring it in front of the county commissioners. There's just not enough money.
I have a question, back in two, two thousand fourteen, back in two thousand fourteen, when y'all did the junior lien loan, and that pledge was made, that quarter percent before, I know the people in Oklahoma City advised you to, but did y'all seek out the DA's?
Yes, we did, we, we seeked out the DA's advice. Yes, we did.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, just to clear this real quick, the quarter cent has not been pledged to the junior, no, it's been pledged to the refinance.
It's included in the junior loan.
Which is included in the junior loan.
Yes.
But there was a letter that was provided by Ms. Williams at the time, that, that said the refinancing was legal, if I'm not mistaken.
Janice Williams?
No, Danita Williams.
And then she rescinded on it thirty days later.
Yeah, they rescinded on it later.
After the, after the.
The fact.
After it was already completed.
She advised us to do it, we did seek legal advice.
No, yeah, cause I've got that letter, I mean, I, I haven't seen the rescinded letter, but I had the letter where, so I mean.
She didn't have a letter, I think she came in the meeting and told them she gave.
She was actually present in the meeting.
She was here, but my thinking, Tim, I'm not a bond attorney.
No.
I, hey, this is beyond me, and I think everybody in this room would admit it, it's beyond them, it's beyond everybody in this room. You know, well.
Well, again, we just need some sound legal advice from a bond attorney.
Well, we'll have Mr. Orbison come down.
You wanna do it in a regular meeting, or do you wanna do it?
I think, if we're doing a regular meeting, I, I mean, I think we ought to go back into executive session. But I don't care, whatever you wanna do.
Well, unless.
Clark?
I think the community needs to know as well, they need to hear it.
I do, I believe the community ought to know that.
Cause it's their community, and it, and they're the ones that's.
If you.
They're, they're, they're more important than this, we are, that's the reason why I think everybody needs.
If you did it, if you did it in an executive session, there needs to be a statement prepared after the executive session.
Exact, I know, yeah.
To provide that information.
That is right.
The only thing I would ask is that, um, the executive session included myself, stadium.
It was the regular five, but.
Okay.
You know, I, I have no problem doing it in the open, in an open meeting, if everybody can, you know.
We would need to stand on point.
Follow the agenda. But you know, I, like I said, you know, I've heard comments in town, different places, and, and that one guy said, boy, you got a, you got all this help, why don't you use it? Well, hey, I'm, I'm gonna use any help, if anybody's got a way to pay for this jail, like I said, write it down, present it to us, we'll file it to a T. Alright, moving on.
Okay, Karen did bring me this letter back, and it does say cast a vote, so I'd just like to know when we do vote, is it just for the month of November?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be correct.
For that particular transfer last week that we signed.
I guess most think that I didn't understand why you signed it and didn't, and you worked it out, although you should look at it before you sign it, we all make mistakes, and I understand.
I was told that that transfer wasn't gonna be into this week.
Right, and it wasn't supposed to be, to be honest with you.
And so therefore I wasn't watching it as closely as I should have been, until I'd already signed it and figured out what it was.
Because usually I get it, give it to Karen to be, be put on the agenda for that week of.
And, and my thinking is, I just don't wanna transfer, for any more money out until we figure out, uh, what we're gonna get a plan.
And we do have enough money in reserve, the way I understand it, to go three years without going into fall.
Yeah, but.
Well, we need to talk to him about that too.
We, we will, but that, as of right.
Because we may need that for the junior loan.
As of right now, just an impression I made, but, but you're right, but you're gonna get a hold of it.
I will take care of it.
Alright.
And I will text y'all and let y'all know.
Just whenever he can be here, if he can't be here on the Monday, we'll just, we'll, we'll have a meeting, whatever day he can get here.
We're scared, we're scared, just to make sure. It's very important.
I think it'd really be better to do it sometime other than the regular commissioners meeting.
I stand too, Clark.
Lot of other stuff to take care of and.
Okay, I will check with him if it's, I don't know, if he likes the mornings or afternoons, I really don't know, but.
Well, any day would mind me.
Okay, that'll work.
Alright, I make a motion on item number nine, cause we're seeing there.
I'll see.
Yes.
Part three.
Yes.
Same as that.
Item number ten will be signed appropriation, transfer appropriation, check proceeding, big O's.